Good morning, everyone. We are here today to discuss the incident that occurred with a Compton resident last week. This is not an us versus them discussion. We are here today about equity and justice. We are here today to discuss the treatment of Compton residents, black and brown people, especially our young men by the sheriff's deputies. And let me say that again, it's some sheriff's deputies. It's important for me to distinguish some because not all officers are use excessive force, harass, or violate the civil liberties of our residents, yet some do. And we are here to demand consequences for any member of law enforcement that violates the rights of human beings. Black men are people too. Brown men are people too. Black and brown women are people too. And our lives are at risk. According to The Times' most recent report, since 2000, there have been nearly 900 killings by police that were ruled a homicide by county medical examiners. Almost all of the dead were men. Nearly 80% were black and Latino. More than 98% of those killed were shot. According to The Times, excuse me, "In all but two cases, the use of force was deemed legally justifiable by the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, which is responsible for conducting an investigation into each incident to render justice for the people." Since 2000, only two officers have been charged as a result of a shooting of a civilian while on duty. Count them with me, one, two. We are at a place and time where staying the same is no longer an option. The whole world has changed. Our families have changed. Businesses have changed. Churches have changed. Schools have changed. Cities have changed. And law enforcement must change. Today, we are here to discuss the incident that occurred with Dalvin Price, a Compton resident that was on his way home Sunday, May 31st. The sheriff's department chose to release a statement that painted the picture that this man is guilty. I don't know where Dalvin was going or coming from. The fact is, it doesn't even matter. He has not been charged with a crime. He has not become before a judge, nor has he been sentenced for a crime. No officer has the right to render justice sight on hand. And excessive force, or even worse, death, because they believe someone is guilty or they deserve it. Isn't this America? Don't black and brown people have the right to due process? This is someone's loved one, a human being. What if this was your child? Compton residents deserve, and we are here to demand equitable treatment, period. We are tired of dodging sheriff's cars that have no regard for traffic laws or personal property, being snatched out of our cars, having our vehicles illegally searched, being threatened and intimidated, beaten, and in some cases murdered, like Ryan Twiman and countless others. We demand the same treatment that deputies provide to the residents of Malibu, Palos Verdes, and other communities. And according to the size of our sheriff's contract, they have 22 million reasons to do so, and we have 22 million reasons to expect it. Dalvin and his family will tell their own story. And the courageous resident, Sister Asia Hall, who filmed the incident, and subsequently she and her family have been harassed by Compton sheriff's deputies, she will tell her own story as well. Now, I will welcome up Dalvin Hall and his family. Excuse me, Dalvin Price, excuse me. And his grandmother. His legal counsel is also here with him today. Mr. Price.
Hello, everyone. Here to talk about the event that happened on Sunday, May 31st. I was coming home from visiting some friends, and I noticed the police following me. And I got out of my car. They told me to get down on the ground, and I was instantly beaten. They didn't force me to get on the ground. I got on the ground on my own. And from that point on, I just remember getting hit and telling them to stop hitting me, and they told me to stop resisting, although I wasn't resisting. And I was trying my best to comply with everything they were saying. However, I was still treated like I didn't have any rights. I was kicked. My head was banged on the floor, nonstop repeatedly. After I told them that I wasn't resisting, my hands were behind my back, and they steadily told me to get on the ground, get on the ground, which I was already on the ground. They said I had a gun. They said numerous things, which I know I am innocent. It's very hard for me to say. That time of the moment, I was just very scared. I didn't know what to do because I knew I was innocent. I knew I didn't do anything wrong. And they treated me like I was some type of animal or like I wasn't a human being. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jacqueline. And I'm here to speak about the incidents that has gone on and since the situation with my grandson. Dalvin was released from jail that Tuesday, on the second. That Tuesday afternoon, on my street, was blocked off. Gang task was there. I had over 20 officers there. I asked the officer, I said, "Why are you there? Why are you here?" He said, "We come to clean the streets for cars that's not registered." I said, "Really?" He said, "Yeah." In front of my house, gang tasks. Gang tasks don't come and clean the street for unregistered cars. I'm thinking. Tow truck came. They took one vehicle. That was my son's vehicle. I'm waiting for the rest of the tow trucks to come. They took my son's vehicle, and I asked the officer, I said, "Why are you taking this truck?" "Oh, we're not impounding it. We're just gonna store it." "What do you mean, you're gonna store it? You have no reason to store it. He wasn't driving it. We're all in the house because of the curfew." "The vehicle wasn't moving. Why are you gonna take his truck?" "Well, the registration has expired." I said, "Officer, that's not the only vehicle that's registration has expired. There's other vehicles on the street also has expired." "I don't see any other tow trucks." "Well, we're just gonna take this one." "Okay." They took it. We went and got it out the next day. I just don't understand. Since that time, officers come up and down my street three, four times a day, pull in my driveway, make eye contact, turn around, smile, even wave at you. Drive out. During the nighttime, they'll come and shine their light in my house. For real? This is unreal. I'm not believing what's going on here. This has been going on since this incident with Dalvin. Every day, all day, five, six times a day. This is what I endure. This is what my family endure. And I'm really not understanding. I'm not understanding. If we go outside, get in the car, they wanna pull up, they wanna search the car, where you're going, what you're doing, unnecessary. I don't get it. So this kind of harassment is unjust. It is unjust. There's no reason for it. There's no reason for it at all. Officer tells my son, "I know everybody in your house. I know your sister. I know your brother. I know your nephews. I know your..." "What? We didn't ask for that information. So what are you, what are you threatening somebody? What are you saying? What, you're gonna come and pull everybody out the house?" He shows my son the video of the incident. My son says, "Hey, I have nothing to do with that. I'm not involved with that." You know, it's like they're trying to insinuate something. I don't get it. I don't understand. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, I'm going to welcome up Ms. Jacqueline Venters, also a neighbor of the Dalvin family. Please come on up, Ms. Venters.
Good morning, Compton. I don't feel like a neighbor to them. They're family to me. You know, my grandson is at Ms. Jackie's house every day. And this is very personal. You know, when I got the... When I first seen the video, I sent it out. I sent it out to two of our elected officials, not knowing that this was my baby that was on that video. And immediately, you know, when I found out, I found out, you know, it had a different effect on me. More so because I had got a message from an elected official stating that the reason why they jumped on him is because he had a gun, and he wouldn't drop the gun. And this is the reason. And we're gonna stop that, you guys. We know that this young man didn't have no gun. The video told the story. And these deputies have been getting away with so much for all these years that they feel everything is legal that they're doing right now. They've been getting away with murder, attempted murder, robbery, rape, everything that they arrested us for. They've been getting away with it. And now it's time for change. You know, my heart goes out to George Floyd family. But you know, his death won't go in vain because he had woke up a lot of people that's been sleeping for years that don't see color. We have some, every nationality out here that's protesting. And we're doing it intelligently. You know, some people have lost their life behind it. And my heart goes out to those families too. But this young man right here didn't do anything. You know, first they said he was looting. That didn't work. Then they come back and say that he shot somebody. That didn't get far at all. So we're gonna hold them accountable for that one. But then they came back and wanted to threaten him and say that if he didn't admit to what... If he didn't tell who hit one of the deputies over there in the parking lot, that they were gonna charge him with it. I don't understand that, but that's what they did, you know. And after the afterthought, them coming to their house. Dalvin came to my house upon his release. He hadn't even took a shower or anything. He came to me. And I talked to this young man, and I believed him because the first thing he said, I said, "Dalvin, they're saying that you looted." He was like, "No." And him and his fiance said at the same time, "They have cameras over there." You know, he was watching. He watched what was going on, and he left. And in the midst of him leaving, this is what happened. He was trying to get to his grandma. And just like George Foreman, Floyd, hollered for his mom, that's what a lot of us do when we're in fear. We try to get to somebody that's gonna protect us and keep us safe from what happened to him. Now, he's traumatized. This young man hadn't been able to sleep. He's expecting a new baby. I don't know what kind of father he's gonna be right now because he can't focus on himself. I sent him to the hospital that day. He wasn't treated while he was in custody, and he had fractured ribs. You know, and he's still in pain right now. As a matter of fact, I don't know if he went back, but I told him he needed to go back to the emergency because he's still dealing with pain over there. And I don't know if his ribs need to be wrapped or if it's something else. But lately, we've been getting a lot of calls from the harassment of our law enforcement. You know, our young men getting beaten while in handcuffs. I mean, well, in handcuffs also, but in their seat belts. They haven't even got out their car. And this is not one. This is like three incidents that I was told of these young men. And it's crazy because these young men that I'm speaking of, none of them had records. We had longshoremen. We had just a father that was working. I mean, guys that didn't have a record, and their careers are being destroyed because of these trumped-up charges are being put on them. And it's not fair. And we gotta keep fighting, you guys. We gotta keep fighting because if we don't stand up, they're gonna continue to lay us down. And I want to briefly share testimony of a fight. Nine years ago, Tenell Phillips, whom I call my son, he was shot five times in the back. They planted a gun on him to cover up this deputy's wrongful act because he had shot four people already in seven months. Today, God is my witness, and I get emotional. God heard my cry. They heard my cry. So this is a platform now for us to make change because if they're gonna go back nine years and investigate something somebody did, how many other people are wrongfully in jail for something that they didn't do, our loved ones? We gotta continue to fight. I kept paper. I kept a paper trail of everything that happened. And I'm advising everybody else to do the same. If something happened to you, get names, times, date, phone number, and any other paperwork. I call my notebook my bible because this is what has gotten me to where I'm at right now today. The Sheriff Oversight Committee is going to investigate. Today is the... Tomorrow, they're having a meeting. And I shared on social media that everybody that have an issue with our law enforcement needs to link on to that meeting tomorrow. Share your concerns. Make your complaints. Let your voices be heard because we can make a difference. On Sunday, we had an awesome march out here. Unbelievable because, you know, they say Compton, they have labeled us to be this bad city. And we proved them wrong. We proved them wrong during the looting. Our city is still standing. You know, we didn't burn. We didn't destroy. We made peace. And in order for us to make peace, we gotta fight for justice because justice is peace. So I'm just saying, if we all pull together, we're gonna demand justice. Starting today, we're gonna demand. And we're gonna fight. We're gonna fight intelligently. We don't have to pull out no guns or set nothing on fire, whatever. We know how to get them. And we got an army. We got a whole army over here that's gonna help us. So thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody coming together to help this young man right here. And we gotta fight for justice for Dalvin also because they're trying to put these trumped-up charges on him. And we're not gonna let them. He was released and didn't even know what he was charged with. What kind of sense did that make? All right.
Thank you. Now, we're going to introduce and hear from the witness that filmed the incident, Ms. Asia Hall. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Asia Hall. I am the resident that filmed the video of what happened to Mr. Dalvin Smith. I'm kinda torn in between because I worked in the city of Compton with the residents, with the homeless, with the sheriff, you know, helping people. And then to see that, it's just kind of like a blur. So again, I know all sheriffs aren't bad because I worked with a few of them, but these particular two went over and beyond with their job title is. And so since I pressed that record button, it's like my life has been turned upside down. I've been harassed. Me and my son, my son has been pulled over. Me and my family are afraid to leave our home, which we assume to be relocating. But I'm here with my voice speaking out because just like all black people aren't bad, all cops aren't bad. And I think that justice needs to be served for this young man. If a crime was committed, he should have been arrested, took to court, and been judged by a jury of 12, not by three. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Asia. Now, I'm going to introduce Jawan Hicks, prolific civil rights attorney. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jaman, that's J-A-M-O-N, Hicks, H-I-C-K-S. I'm with Douglas Hicks Law Firm. And before I make some brief comments, I want to first thank Mayor Brown for putting on this wonderful press conference. I want to also thank City Attorney Damon Brown that's in the back there that you'll hear from momentarily, and also Ms. Jasmine Cannon. Sadly, we're here again. Sadly, we're dealing with the same discussions that we've been dealing with for years about police brutality. Sadly, this young man had his head banged over and over and over again against the cement. Fortunately, he's alive. Fortunately, he can tell his story. But how many can't tell their stories? Another sad thing about this situation is that he was arrested. So the fact that he didn't die out there, they're still trying to ruin his life. They're trying to make up stories about what he did. He's facing felony charges. Felony charges for assault on a deadly weapon when he did absolutely nothing wrong. And that is a problem. The gray cream out dude Jabar just recently said when he was asked, "How does he feel about what's happening now? Is he optimistic?" And he had a very profound quote. He said, "I'm caught somewhere between hope and history." Right? Because hope allows me to believe as I watch the marches, as I see the people come out, as I see the unity of the community all over, not just the United States, but all over the globe. As I see that, I believe we will move forward and we can move forward. But then, I see a video of Mr. Price. And I'm reminded that we're dealing with the same thing over and over and over again. But not anymore. Because we're requesting changes, and we're making demands. All of us are making demands. One demand is immediately, any charges that you're even considering, thinking about bringing against this man, they need to be dropped. Immediately, we're requesting that any and all officers that were involved in this brutal attack, they be charged with the crime. Immediately, we're requesting that any and all officers that were involved in this brutal attack be fired immediately. And it doesn't stop there. We want to hold accountable any and all sheriff officers that have been stalking this family, that have been stalking the witness's family. They too need to be investigated. Again, I want to thank Mayor Brown, Ms. Cannon, City Attorney Brown for this well-attended press conference. But we gotta make sure we don't leave it here. Thank you for everything. And I believe next, we're gonna have City Attorney Damon Brown with some remarks. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Damon Brown, and I have the honor of serving this city as its city attorney. And in this role, I am uniquely positioned to make a difference because I'm a black city attorney. And as a black city attorney and part of this elected leadership in this city, we will not stand for violence against our residents or any individual that comes to the city of Compton. The city currently contracts, as Mayor Brown said, with the sheriff's department for law enforcement services for $22 million. And incidents like this were not part of that bargain. The residents are not going to fund their own destruction simply because we have decided to outsource our law enforcement function to the sheriff's department. And for this relationship between the city and law enforcement to continue, there must be accountability and transparency. The mayor and I wrote a letter to Sheriff Alex Villanueva last week upon learning of this incident. And in that letter, we made three demands. The first demand was that the individuals involved in the incident on May 31st be immediately removed from Compton Station. The second demand was that any officers that were involved would be replaced by other officers who would treat our residents with the self-respect and dignity that they deserve. The third was that there would be assurances given to us that the sheriff's department would not permit the harassment or intimidation of any residents that were involved or witnesses to this incident. And to this letter, we have received no response. And that is why we are here today because we will not be silenced as a result of the lack of commitment that the sheriff's department at this point has chosen in resolving our grievances. But in response, we are deciding to take proactive steps in demanding this transparency and justice for our residents. Next Tuesday, our city council will consider an urgency ordinance to create a law enforcement review board. And this will provide a parallel track for residents to lodge complaints and to monitor the investigation of those complaints, solicit community and expert opinions and input on how to improve our law enforcement services, and will be in alignment with the city's commitment to maintain a safe environment for the public recognizing the need for police reform. We further demand that the sheriff's contract or that the sheriff's department allow cities such as Compton to have actual influence in the negotiation of our contract, which to this point has not provided an opportunity for any input in the negotiation for the contract. In order to increase this accountability, we want to make sure that deputies are patrolling our city with Compton City Seals on the vehicles so that at all times, we know which deputies are in our cities and can hold those deputies accountable for the actions that they take in our city. We would like for Sheriff Alex Villanueva and all law enforcement departments in Los Angeles County to adopt the eight-step restrictions that were recommended by the advocacy group Campaign Zero. And many of those restrictions include requiring officers to intervene to stop another officer from using excessive force, banning or restricting the use of chokeholds, requiring officers to de-escalate situations before using force, using use of force continuum that defines and limits the types of force that can be used in response to various forms of resistance, requiring officers to give verbal warnings before using deadly force, prohibiting officers from shooting people in moving vehicles unless the person poses a deadly threat by means other than the vehicle, requiring officers to exhaust all other reasonable alternatives before resorting to use of deadly force, and requiring comprehensive reporting that includes both use of force and threats of force. I've also accepted the challenge that was issued to all city attorneys in the state to follow the mayor's pledge presented by President Obama that requests mandatory implicit bias and anti-bias training in police departments and for city employees, and to immediately update and revise all use-of-force policies. Our plan is to work with experts in this field, which would include the last speaker, Jaman Hicks, who is a prominent civil rights attorney who has prosecuted cases against various law enforcement departments within this area and successfully advocated for the rights of residents so that their 14th Amendment rights to equal protection and treatment under the law are advocated. And we'll continue to work as a city to make sure that our residents' safety and well-being is protected at all times. Thank you.
Next, I'm going to welcome up Paulette Simpson Gibson with the Compton NAACP. And I also want to alert the news that we will be taking questions after the conference. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Paulette Gibson. I am president of the Compton NAACP. It is a tragedy that we have to continue to come because of the civil rights violation of our community. We're here to send a clear message to law enforcement and particularly the sheriff. We are not gonna continue to allow our community to be intimidated, to be harassed, and to be abused in our own community. We want the officers that were involved not just to be removed, but to be terminated and to be personally criminalized and to be prosecuted. We want Jackie Lacy to stop this culture of not prosecuting police. This is why we have the problems that we have. It is not just enough to say we're not gonna tolerate it. We're gonna stand up and step out. And we want to thank the city of Compton, the mayor, and the community for standing up for themselves. It's videotapes that's got them on camera, making them even conscious of what's going on. We will not tolerate this any longer. And we're asking for immediate removal of those officers, as well as Jackie Lacy to step in and prosecute them. Because it's a shame and a charge to keep on happening. And law enforcement in Compton, beware. To continue to dehumanize our community, we're gonna be on you like white on rice. We're tired, and enough is enough. We're not turning the clock backwards. We're going forward. Thank you.
Now, I have the esteemed honor to welcome up my colleagues on the Compton City Council. Councilwoman Michelle Chambers representing the First District, Councilwoman Tana McCoy representing the Third District, and Councilwoman Emma Sharif representing District Four. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Councilwoman Michelle Chambers, and I represent the great First District here in the city of Compton. First, on behalf of the city of Compton, I would like to apologize to Mr. Price and the Price family for the incident that occurred in our city in May. I'm extremely disturbed by the actions I seen in the video by LA County Sheriff's Department. But what really disturbs me is the quick, non-hesitant actions of these officers. From the looks in that video, he didn't think twice about kicking Mr. Price, and his fellow officers didn't think twice about stopping him. Why is that? Why is that? Are they not aware of what's going on in America right now, around the world, in those current events? From the excuses, from the excessive force of law enforcement, of law enforcement, to Mr. George Floyd, to the protesting, to Black Lives Matter, the message clearly has not resonated with them, and that is troubling to me. But you know why? It's because their conduct never has consequences. And what we demand today is exactly what we demand today. And that is that LA County Sheriff be held accountable immediately when an act of unethical conduct is committed. We demand that we may wear of deputies serving in our cities who are under investigation for unethical behaviors. We demand that LA County Sheriff Department deputies receive psychological evaluations semi-annually for their trauma. They face trauma every day. Not to mention PTSD in law enforcement officers around the world has increased. Almost half of our cities... Almost half of our city's budget goes to LA Sheriff's Department. We need resources and deputies committed to solving homicide cases, including Mr. Samundy Bracken, Demetrius Bracken, who was gunned down in December of two thousand eighteen. We demand an outline plan on incorporating community policing into our methods of law enforcement. Compton is not your training day. Our city is one of love, compassion, and resilience. In closing, I would like to personally thank all the deputies here in our Compton Station who serve genuinely with the passion to serve our residents and serve them with respect and dignity. For we are Compton, we are Compton Strong, and we are Compton United. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tana McCoy. I'm Councilwoman of the Third District. I just stand here united with my colleagues to say that the city of Compton deserves better. The city of Compton deserves to be treated as everyone else is treated and that we will not stop until we are treated equally. I want you to know that I stand with my colleagues and I stand with the Compton sheriffs that are here to really be of service, but I also stand against those that do not have any good intentions toward the city of Compton. So together, we will make a difference. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Emma Sharif and I am the representative for the Councilwoman and I represent the Fourth District in the great city of Compton and who we, where we are today. I want to let the community, uh, know that I stand with them against, uh, against police brutality. I have been assured by the, uh, Captain Clark that this, uh, case is being thoroughly investigated and will not be swept under the rug. We need to make sure that the residents of Compton feel safe and know that ju- justice is a priority. We as a community now have an opportunity to begin having important discussion as to what we want our, our community policing to look like going forward. I have had dialogue with the, uh, county supervisor in regards to implementing body cams and have been assured that the body cam project will be moving forward. This will be another safety measure that would be, benefit the residents as well as the deputies. I am, I am hopeful that as we continue to stand together as a community, as we continue to have the necessary discussions, as we work alongside the, uh, the sheriff and the supervisor, we can change the practices and how deputies interact with our residents in this community. So I do stand with the commi- with the, with the, uh, community and I also stand with those officers that's really here working diligently, trying to do a good job for our citizens. And I wanna thank them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. As I prepare, um, to close, I'd like to just take a moment to thank George Gascon, um, for being here with us today. The Sheriff's Department's motto is "A Tradition of Service." And if you haven't looked around and recognized the signs of the times, it is time to break your tradition. It's time to implement new transformative policies and establish new protocols that improve outcomes and saves lives, the very lives that taxpayers provide and used for to serve. The citizens of Compton demand to be treated with dignity and respect. Like all other communities, we are the second-largest sheriff's contract to the tune of twenty-two million dollars annually. It is our responsibility as representatives of the community to ensure that we make our tax dollars work for our constituents. The ever-evolving, unique needs of our community should be addressed. Cities are like fingerprints. Each city that is contracting with a service provider deserves to be involved in the process. We are service, no, we are serving notice today that we've taken a pledge as community members to do just that. You'll be hearing more about that on another day. On behalf of the great and resilient residents of Compton, black and brown human beings, we challenge the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Villanueva, to seize the opportunity to evolve with society and eradicate the systemic racism and the paramilitary tactics deployed by the Sheriff's Department rooted in the tradition of white supremacy and intimidation, of racially profiling black and brown people, from threatening our children and inflicting trauma. We've had enough. Choose this day to be on the right side of history. Choose this day to be collaborative on a new department that will protect the safety of our residents and evolve to implementing evidence-based programs and shared targeted outcomes that are designed to protect and serve all people with dignity and respect. Black lives matter too. Brown lives matter too. And let me be clear, the only option here today is to commit to change. Otherwise, we that represent the good people of the city of Compton will be forced to make a change. Because the quest for justice will not stop in Compton or this nation. This is a new generation and we picked up the baton for our elders and ancestors. And if anyone is wondering what is happening in our nation, as sure as we're standing here today at the MLK monument, we will make it to freedom. The world has entered the final leg of the marathon for justice and it will continue. At this time, it's not just justice for black and brown people on the front lines. We have our allies with us. Every ethnicity, every nation in the fight for justice, and we will not stop until we are free. As I close, whether or not the news media chooses to acknowledge and report on it, know this. This community, the great city of Compton, full of beautiful, black and brown, Samoan, and all people, we are united. And we are taking on all threats to the future of our children, both foreign and domestic. We are the united, we are the united community of Compton. We are Compton United and Compton Strong. God bless you. Any questions? If the sheriff does not meet his community where, where we are, then we will be forced to exercise our options. As, as sure as I'm sure he's listening today, I hope to hear from him soon. Any more questions? Last week, following the incident that occurred with Mr. Dalvin Price. Annually. Thank you. Any additional questions for any members of the community? Absolutely. I would be pleased to invite, uh, Mr. Gascon, who has a track record of innovating innovative policies for justice.
Morning, everyone. First of all, I wanna thank, uh, the family for your courage in being here today. And I wanna thank the mayor and civil rights lawyers that are here today. I'm here today just to offer support. We have been talking about the need for criminal justice reform for years. And often, our message has been unheard. Other than people in the African-American community and sometimes the Latino community, many others have looked the other way. I think we're a historic moment. And I really liked the words that I heard that we are the combination of hope and history. And I'm gonna give you my own piece of why I am at that hope and history. I was a police officer in ninety-two, working not far from here. I lived through a breakdown in leadership that caused the destruction of our community. And I, and many others in my generation, pledged that this would never happen again. I was heartbroken when I saw my own LAPD behaving in the way that they did in dealing with peaceful demonstrators. The level of force, the overbroad curfews that were visited upon our entire county. I am heartbroken. So the intersection between hope and history is one that we must, together. And not just black and brown people, but white people have to play a role. Fixing racism in our system is not the responsibility of the African-American community. It is the responsibility of white America. It is the responsibility of all of us. I am passionate about this work. I've been doing it for years. And the part of hope in me is that I had people that were not returning my calls a few weeks ago, they're now calling me. I had people that said, "You know, I love you, brother, but I cannot support you cuz the police unions will come after me for the next election." Now I'm seeing some of those people giving that money back. There are a lot of good police officers there. But there's corruption in police unions in this country. They have ruled through coercion and intimidation. And we have to make sure that police unions' money become toxic. They should be treated like tobacco money or fossil fuels money. And that is not the responsibility of the African-American community in this country. That is the responsibility of all of us, especially white America. We need white America to step away from privilege and understand that they bear the responsibility for ensuring that the next generation of people like us, and certainly older people like me, will not have to stand twenty years from now in front of a mic and talk about the intersection between hope and history. Let's talk about action. Let's talk about real change. I am very energized. I'm honored for being with all of you today. But again, it has to be everyone and white America has to be part of the solution. Thank you. Look, I think that we have to start getting away from this concept that this case is where you have clear video where there's an assault occurring. And that, you know, that talk about, well, we don't know what happened thirty seconds before. The reality is that thirty seconds before, a minute before, do not matter. What we're seeing at the moment is clear and it's excessive force, it's an assault under the color of authority. And our district attorney doesn't have to wait for a lengthy police investigation to begin the work. The process of litigation is a process of continuous investigation. But I guarantee you that if that, if that young man would have been assaulting someone else and we had that video, he would be in custody now and the case would have been filed. There was a similar case in East LA, the Hollenback area, the LAPD. And I came up very openly, very quickly, and I urged our city, our district attorney to file charges. And she immediately, first of all, began to quote a description of the law that is not the law. She gave much more room to police officers to use excessive force than what the law allows. But then she says, "I have to wait for an investigation." And I said to her, "You don't have to wait for an investigation. You have video that clearly shows that this was excessive force." She filed a case recently. I am hoping that she doesn't wait weeks in this case. This case should be filed tomorrow. And the investigation can continue, but frankly, what happened thirty, forty, fifty seconds prior to that or a minute doesn't justify what we saw in video. I absolutely demand that there be a case filed on those officers and it should be filed immediately. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.